ZB, that two zero one nine, you see that, zero seven. Site plan and use variance application for the conversion of gasoline station auto repair retail use into a gasoline station retail use at one twenty seventy seven, block seventy one, five twenty nine, thirty one, and thirty three.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, prior to council starting, is the member...
Can you close your door?
Yes, please. As the members of the board maybe were, may recall, this was before the board on September the twenty-third, the application was heard by the board, there was an approval with conditions. That approval, although there was a turn of vote, was never reduced to a memorialized resolution. The, prior to the resolution coming before the board and after the initial approval of the application, the applicant's attorney indicated that they wished to come back before the board and ask for a, ask for relief or deviation from the conditions of the approval were granted by the board. So today, the application is back before the board, there is, essentially, this is a new application, only insofar as the testimony that's already been provided is, is going to be carried over. The members of the board that were at the last listing on September the twenty-third are all present again today, so there's no need to, to have any certifications that they've actually heard the testimony that was previously provided. This is essentially because it's a request for reconsideration prior to the adoption of the resolution. This is essentially a continuation of that application. There are three options that the board members have today. The approval of the, the relief from the condition of the prior approval, as counsel may make it out. The second is that the board can deny the approval of the relief that they're seeking, which means that they're reaffirming their previous approval, and it'll come back subsequent listing of this board for a resolution of that approval. The third is that since this is indeed an application that hasn't been closed, the board can still vote to deny the application, even though it is a reconsideration only of a condition of the approval that council's asking for. The board looks at the entire application again. So, council, if, that summation, if you have exception to that, just let me know, and I can certainly address that with the board.
No, I think, I think you captured the essential elements, hundred percent correct.
Okay. Please go forward, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, good evening, members of the board. David Himmlman for the applicant, Universal Property. As your attorney indicated, you recall back September twenty-third, we did present our application, and the board did approve the use variance and bulk sale variance approval. We are here tonight, in essence, as your attorney indicated, for a request for reconsideration on one condition that was noted during the discussion and also was incorporated in the approval, which, your attorney is correct, has, the resolution has not been memorialized. And for the record, we did grant an extension of that, that time period, which is for the board to act on a resolution. And the condition that we're here tonight for discussion for reconsideration has to do with the, with the condition relating to the parking of vehicles on the site, on the property in question at one twenty seventies. And I think you recall, Mr. Chairman, there was questions, and I think directly from you initially, then other board members, that there was concern that there were cars being parked from off, from off-site on the property, and you indicated that that was not permitted under the, under the zoning ordinance, and could in fact be a land use violation. In response to that discussion, the applicant indicated that he understood that there was that situation going on, and that I think that he even testified that there was a, a contractor agreement with the contractor who was doing renovations up the street, allowing them to park there temporarily during construction. And you, Mr. Chairman, asked whether or not that situation was going to be rectified, and the applicant indicated, yes, it will be rectified tomorrow. And unfortunately, I think there was perhaps, I'm going to have the applicant testify specifically on his intent and understanding of what he meant by that testimony, but subsequently there was a notice of violation issued by the city of New Brunswick for a zoning violation. That violation was heard in municipal court here in the city, and ultimately, there was a plea agreement in which the applicant did agree to pay a fine, not for a zoning violation, but a lesser offense, and I'm going to let the applicant indicate pretty much what happened in municipal court. We're here to represent to you that I would like to put the applicant on, again, to explain the circumstances, explain his intention, explain also what measures have been taken since we appeared last time in terms of enforcement and allowing, to avoid cars from parking on the property, including not only the contractor who had that arrangement with the, with the applicant, but also residents who may be parking there, not realizing that it's private property and they're not supposed to, and other vehicles that have been towed away, you know, on a weekly basis. So, if you were allowing, Mr. Chairman, I would like to present my, my applicant as a witness, so we could address this issue, and then we can discuss whether or not there needs to be reconsideration of that particular one condition, or how the board would like to handle it.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay. Would you just say your name for the record, please?
Say, Kazem.
Okay.
It's probably your last name. K-A-Z-M. Do you swear or affirm tell all truth to the chairman about the trial? I do. You appreciate?
Sayed, now you were here last time, and you testified in connection with this application, correct?
I did.
And you realize you're still under oath, and this application is still active and open?
I did.
Okay. You've heard the discussion that I've had with the board. Why don't you explain the circumstances specifically regarding your testimony on the issue of the parked vehicles on the property, and your intent when you made those representations, where you indicated you would rectify the, the issue tomorrow? And that was, that's a direct quote from the, from the transcript, so I would, I would ask you to elaborate on that.
Sure. First of all, I really do appreciate your time this evening. I just want to let the board know...
Just, if you could just pick up a little...
Sure. I just want to, I just want to let the board know, I did not have any intention or any hopes of misrepresenting any statement to the board. If that was construed that way, I highly do apologize for that. There was a comment made by the chairman that potential actions of cars being parked there could be a potential violation, or is a violation of the zoning law. With that comment, I did say I'll have it rectified tomorrow, and I, I guess it's poor choice of words by not saying exactly what measure we're going to be taking, but under my knowledge, I meant, I'll start the process to have it rectified as early as tomorrow. Because there was a couple of prior discussions right before leaving up to that, questions about cameras and security and the whole nine yards, which I did testify that I will start, we will have all those implemented upon the approval and start the convenience store. So when the comment was made about the parked cars, and I said I'll have it tomorrow, what I meant to say was, I'm not going to wait until the approval, but we'll have that process rectified as early as tomorrow, which I did. I contacted all the contractors, and I said, even though you purchase fuel from us, there is a potential breach of this, so I request that please remove it. There are other cars, residents' cars, which we didn't tow just as a courtesy to residents, because we're not using those parking spots for our repair shop, which is not operational. So we never enforced those heavily. I did inform my employees very, very next day, that please, instead of, you know, being hard for the town, if you see a person parked there, just simply request, ladies or gentlemen, please, we cannot allow you to park here. So when I said, in fact, I'll have it rectified tomorrow, I do really do apologize, it was a very poor choice of words. I should have initially stated that I'll have the process to rectify the entire situation. I'll have initiated tomorrow rather than just saying I rectify tomorrow. So those are just poor choices of my words, under known intent that I mean to misrepresent this board who are allowing me to position to further my business in the state of New Brunswick.
Well, let me answer this question, Sayed. So, moving the process forward, so what, what have you done since we appeared on September twenty-third to attempt to rectify this?
Sure. If I may, I addressed some of these exhibits here. There were...
Hold on.
So why don't we mark them, A five, A four was the last exhibit that you had marked, so beginning with A five. A five through...
Do you want, do you mark them, do you want to mark them individually?
Yeah, let me just go ahead and mark them if I may.
Sure.
Mark them on the back.
Sorry, I can bring the protocol, I did.
Mr. Chairman, I've marked these A five through A eleven, so if you could just refer to the number?
Sure. So if I may, proceed forward, I did instruct everyone who was parking, who was purchasing fuel from us to, and using our parking spots that were designated, that we were no longer allowed to do that. Given people, a lot of people requested some time, and said, you know, have a couple of days would not be an issue, just to please have that rectified moving forward. But once I see that the results are not being fruitful, I went out, even though it hurt our business tremendously, ever since then, I took caution tape and references as A eleven, and put it around the area where people are parking, to alert people that this is not an area where you're allowed to park. Subsequently, you're on the side of the building, as evidenced by A ten, A nine would reference on the side of the building where the existing shop is. That was also corridored off with caution tapes. People kept breaking those and parking, whoops, threw them, so I put two, as referenced by A nine, and again, in A seven and eight, shows, I also put parking cones and tied those to chains, so therefore, people are alerted that this is not an authorized space. In addition to this, after seeing that people still park next to that and walk away, because, so I did contract out, I spent money into making signs, and we contracted a local New Brunswick towing company by the name of Musulman Sons. Their local New Brunswick tow company, which we have a contract with, which was initiated the very next day, to patrol the park, patrol the seastore two times, or gas station two times a day, and if they see any cars you're not parking, they're going to start removing those. So that went into effect. They have posted these signs referencing A five throughout the property in four different parking areas, to show that you're not allowed to park if you all, you all tow. The previous company that we're using were not up to the par, so I went and contracted another company to have them more responsive to these actions. It took a little bit of time to print these signs, because they have to be illuminated at night, I can't call mics up, but so in case somebody parks in the night and they have to remove those, it took a little bit of time just to get those printed, but I had the process started very next day after this testimony. And just to reiterate on the fact of receiving the citation, I did go and represent the company in a municipal court. I spoke to prosecutor, and the prosecutor did not feel like there was enough burden or evidence to find me guilty of the violation. So she...
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'm not sure that this witness is qualified to express what the thoughts of the prosecutor were.
Fair enough. I just, why don't you just stick to the facts of what happened?
Sure. So we went over there, I presented, she asked me what comment, I stated to her, this is what we're doing. There's, people are parking a car, I showed her, sorry, I showed her the steps that were taken to rectify that, so she did not find me guilty of the zoning violation, but decided to plead guilty to a trash violation, which was a voluntary fine, which I did take care of. So I do want to, last thing before, we're looking, after I've had the process, we're looking to invest close to half a million dollars into this property, to upgrade the, not only aesthetic, but the entire testimony that we've provided so far, to improve this property as a whole. And the board has given me opportunity to do so, and I'm highly grateful for that. And I would just request that the comment made of rectifying it tomorrow not be construed within just those three words, but I just, poor word choice of, should I not grant that point by saying, well, the process started tomorrow to rectify the situation, and not just those simple three words? So, again, I do apologize if I didn't, by no way form that I need to misrepresent it or that it's not an opportunity to do my business.
Mr. Chairman, if you would like, we could, we could have these exhibits shown to the members of the board, if you'd like, or...
Well, if they've been marked, what am I, closing match?
Mr. Chairman, I would also like to make a comment, and I also would like to apologize to you and the members of the board. And I explained to my client, who by the way is an inspiring attorney, that words do matter, so, and I feel somewhat partially responsible as well, because I should have sought clarification from the applicant when he made that representation, but that this mattered, that the chairman was correctly addressing on the parked vehicles, that he didn't perhaps mean literally tomorrow that the cars would be literally yanked off the property, because that obviously is a process to that. So I want to apologize to you, Mr. Chairman, and to the members of the board and the public. I will say that I think the applicant is sincere in his willingness to try and move this process forward. If we can come to some resolution of this condition, the applicant is prepared to move forward with his building permit applications, architectural plans are already processed, fully engineered plans are being worked on as we speak. So, I, Mr. Chairman, just wanted to apologize as well, because I, I did take partial responsibility for that.
Thank you. But I, I do believe there's still some concerns, that parks are still parking and are parked a lot.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I, I have some, some points I want to share, and if I could take off my, my board secretary hat and put on my planning department hat here for a second. So, yes, on, on September twenty-third, I believe that's when we had our zoning board in September, Mr. Cosme did state that they were going to remediate the situation the next day. Now, as he stated today, it may have been a bit of hyperbole, but he did state that. Now, ten days after the hearing on October third, I relayed to Mr. Himmlman via email that the situation had not been corrected, and I told him that they would have until October seventh, which I believe was the following Monday after that date, to correct the issue before I would have our zoning officer issue summons. On the tenth, I mean, on the seventh, it was still not corrected, zoning officer on or about the October tenth issued a summons for that violation. The park, and I let Mr. Himmlman know, the parking situation was swiftly corrected. They put up cones, if I recall correctly. I bike down Eastern every day to work, so I, I see this every day. Eventually, within about a week, the situation deteriorated again, and then when the applicant was asked with respect to reopening and amending the conditions of approval, the situation was once again remediated, and again deteriorated until the applicant was in court, at which point it was again remediated quickly. Last week, after some deterioration, there was caution tape put up on the site, which lasted a few days, and it seemed effective, but even as of this morning, I counted about six or seven cars parked there at about eight-thirty-ish in the morning. So, from the, from the position of the department planning, the city has concerns about Mr. Cosme's ability to control the site, his responsiveness to correct the violations, and how he would be able to properly manage the site once the project is completed.
Sure. So I appreciate that. So, the concerns about people still parking there are due to the fact that the place just, even when you put up the caution tapes, people just drive right through and park there anyways. I don't benefit from having those people park there, because it just, it's wearing to own the property. So there's no benefit that I have of a, a lot of people to park there. It costs me money, obviously, to call the tow company out, to even have those cars removed, those additional expense on us. Now, to the fact of moving forward, and my willingness and my ability to manage these properties, currently, while the site looks very abandoned, to the residents, I guess, from a point, not many people think twice about parking there, they're going to think the place is closed. And even if I drive down myself, to the location, it just looks abandoned and looks closed. So, it's, I guess, to the general public, it might seem that it's acceptable to park there, and as of this morning, again, when I drove by, the worst part part, they drove right through the caution tapes and parked there again. I, we did inform Mr. from Musulman Sons, prior to them coming out, that please have those cars towed. So, if the application approved to be granted, having the full-fledged convenience store will not only give the appearance of the workable premises to show people that this is a business that you're allowed to park here, which would help that out tremendously. And given these contracts that were recently just went up for the signs of the new management of the tow company, should be helping out tremendously. These signs went up very recently, it just took a very long time to have to sprint it. I did the reflective staggering that they put on there. So, yes, I do understand and appreciate your concern, but I have been working very diligently to rectify those. And as you stated, the, I mean, they are getting better, but I think with this new contract that we hired, these, since they're low, they're local companies, so they can patrol the sites not anymore.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant, I think, would be open to additional conditions that the board would feel appropriate and reasonable, to ensure that, whether that is additional monitoring, personnel, how, it's just, there's a practical issue here, and we're trying to deal with it as quickly as we can. We're not trying to, we certainly don't want to be a violation of any code enforcement or ordinances of the, of the city, but we're here to tell you that, you know, we're, the applicant's willing to listen to any conditions that the board may think is reasonable, so that this situation does not keep reoccurring, and I think that's what we're here to, to offer and ask.
When, when did you hang up those signs?
Chairman, I believe they went up over either on Friday or Saturday, I, if I...
So just, just this past week?
This is past week. Though, the way, I guess, these tow companies work, I'm not familiar with their business, but they have to dedicate a certain spot within the warehouse, wherever they park their cars, for these particular spots. If gentleman's parking there and it's towed, I guess they have to stay at a facility that they park the cars at.
Yeah.
Sure. Sorry, could put up a better words. So, that process took them a little bit of time to set everything up, but if you would like, I'd be more than happy, you guys to contact Mr. Musulman Sons to have all that process started.
The biggest problem right now is, you have a guy working there, okay, and he's there from whatever time you open to your plant night, or whatever time you close, and there's still cars parked there.
I'll be very honest...
Why aren't you calling the tow truck when they park there?
So...
And get them out of there right away? Because you said you were there this morning, and you drove by, and your cars parked there. A board member drove by about noon, one o'clock, and there were six to eight cars parked there. Why weren't they towed?
So, two reasons. One, when they're initially parked, I myself made a request to several people to not park their cars, and they have diligently just said, no, we will continue to park here. I myself made a request to one gentleman that said, listen, guys, you're not allowed to park, it's private business, and used a profanity and said that I will do what you have to do. I guess, essence of where it is, and I can answer to that fact, the tow company is required under our contract to have it towed within five hours of a report. So I made the report myself over the weekend, and they towed it by the end of the day. So they cannot, I guess, dedicate an entire truck just to remove cars constantly, just, I guess, to their business. So, what I, the agreement I made with them was that there's a car which is parked unauthorized, have it towed before the end of the day.
And I guess the question is, how are the car, how are you allowing the cars to come onto the property if you have a full-time employee there? That's the chairman's question.
So, if I, quite simply, someone parks there, we can't stand in front of them. All we can say is, please don't park here, this is not private property, and I mean that request myself. They use profanities and say, please, I mean, I can't use this terrain in front of the board, but make profanities and say, no. There's so much that my employee can do at that point, other than tow it to you.
Mr. Chairman, I think the practical issue is, you know, you're, the applicant doesn't necessarily want to contact the police, which he, he can do, I guess, if that's, you know, within his prerogative, we're trying to, you know, and the other, to balance that, if these are local residents, right, that are parking there and are shopping along Eastern Avenue, so that's, that's part of the usual...
I think part of the orig, yes, so part of the original concern should be, one of the residents was, he owned a shop on Eastern Avenue, one of his customers parked there, and I was a, for lack of better terms, a not a good person by a lot telling that customer that I'm going to tow your vehicle. So there's, I mean, it, it's not that, I, it's not that I don't want to do it, but these are the concerns of practical issues. It's not that I'm wanting to not tow people's cars, it's not benefiting me. There's no benefit to me allowing people to just continuously park there. So, when, when I spoke to the prosecutor, she said, listen, if you have to have a bad name in the neighborhood, because you tow cars, that's what you have to do. So, that's exactly what you have to do. So if you contact the Musulman Sons, and I do have the contract that can show you...
Where are they located in Brooklyn? Because I've never heard of them.
They're, and they're in Pendleton, if you allow me, I can use my electronic device to give you the exact address.
Oh, they located in Brooklyn?
They're companies in New Brunswick, but they're in Pendleton, in Fisk, Cat, Fisk Cat, right? Fisk Cat.
Right. Okay. But I have just never heard of that.
Sure, I can give you the address if you'd like, just so...
Mr. Chairman, and perhaps one of the additional conditions could be that the applicant's representative's now hired a tow company, and they have a five-hour window to write a, so, what, what the additional condition could be, if I may suggest something, is that immediately, if the, if the, if a individual is looking to park the car and to avoid a confrontation, the applicant's employees are to be instructed to call the police, and in addition to the, in addition to your tow operator. Because a tow operator, there could be a, you know, a five-hour window perhaps, and that at least to keep a record of every time that the applicant calls the police, and what action is being taken to ensure that these vehicles are being properly removed. In addition, the applicant can provide additional employees on the site for, you know, from now until the period of construction, to, just to deal with that particular issue on the parked vehicle, so that if there, if you're, if your employee who's attending and pumping gas, what may be happening practically, his cars are pulling in, and he's not seeing it, and then they're off. So, those are the types of things, Mr. Chairman, that the applicant would be willing to see, would be willing to pose on itself, if you will, to rectify the situation. I guess, the message is, we're here to tell you that we're doing our very best, we're trying, it's a perfect no, but the applicant really wants to move this project forward and is willing to hear any reasonable conditions that the board may think is appropriate, and I just happen to give you two examples, but there may be others.
I mean, if you want me to prepare, if you want me to do anything of that nature every morning, I'm willing to give so.
Well, that's what I was going to say, maybe instead of putting the cones and the tape, which is easily, maybe you could get some kind of barricade that can just go in front of, like, Eastern Avenue and the side to prevent the cars, because then they can't get out and move those. I mean, I guess they could, but that would take a lot more time and effort on their part to do that, if...
So I, I initially put one of those larger cones, I'm not sure how to describe, but not the small, but the larger one, people remove those as well, but...
Yeah, would have to be something that's heavy enough.
So like a semi-max, semi-box, I'll be more than willing to place those without a doubt, again, if you want me to close the site until the construction's complete, I'll be more than willing to do that as well. I don't have any objections to any sort of ideas brought to the board.
Closing the site's not going to help, because people are just going to park there.
I mean, put in, where it's at the entrance, I mean.
Like, what, a fence around, like, a construction...
I'll be more than willing to...
Oh.
Yeah. If, if, Mr. Chairman, if you think that's appropriate, if we can fence the entire property, and shut the business down.
Until...
I, I, I don't think the business needs to be shut down, but maybe you could fence off the parking spot areas, like those round fences that they use around construction sites, or something like that, that you, and just put weights on them, put... sites or something like that, and just put weights on them, because obviously the wind has been pretty bad, we just don't want it knocked down or not doing, but, you know, something has to be done to keep the cars from parking.
And I, again, that's a very good suggestion, and I think we're open to that. And the other thing, Mr. Chairman, is you certainly can, for your attorney also, but, you know, we're, one, we're willing to close the business down, I understand your point, I'm grateful for that comment. Mr. Chairman, willing to do any fencing, additional barricade, and quite frankly, you know, we're willing to live, you know, stand behind what we're representing, and if that doesn't come forward, then you always have the building, the resolution to direct that the applicant would not be able to proceed with a building permit application. I mean, there are things the board can do to impose other conditions to give you that assurance, but we're here to tell you that we're willing to do everything necessary, and if, and if, if appropriate, we will close the business down. And fence the whole thing.
Today's Monday night, we have rented fences before, it takes about two days for them to come and install them. I'd be more than willing to, and without any hurry, we say by this Friday, which is the third, twenty ninth or thirty, to have the fence installed throughout the corridor of the property, along with the fuel side area, so the only navigable way throughout the property would just be to the gas pumps.
I mean, my only thing with that would be that, I don't know if they would have to go to the city council to get approval to put a fence up there or anything.
So, there is a permit that's required to do that.
So, I can personally go down, and if I'm able to, I'm not sure if I have the authority to do so, but if I'm able to pull up permit, I can go down prior to Friday, I don't know how soon the permits are granted, but I can submit the request for a permit prior to Friday, I can submit that with the board or the Sudan's office, stating that I did start the process for, and I'm gonna say start the process this time to have that, whatever the permits are required, to put a temporary fence or whatever the case may be.
We, we need to show on the permit application, the location of the fence, and what type of material, so you need to be prepared to do that, and file that immediately.
And don't forget it's Thanksgiving.
Correct. I'll be more than willing to work through it, just to get the sign out initially.
Well, it might be helpful, Mr. Chairman, for the board to have a sense of how a project is going along, in terms of when construction might start, so we know how long the fence is going to be there, so that.
So, I'm anticipating, so we just got our soft costs and our hard costs all situated, so it's, there's not issue with financing the project, that is all secured. What we're waiting on, I'm likely to clear this last hurdle, so we can submit our plans for our building and construction. So, if I'm able to have this approved, so I, my goal is by the start of the month to, from the start of the month to the minute of the next month, to have everything submitted. And as soon as approvals come in, my contracts are ready to start right away. My goal and hope is to have this project finished by somewhere before March. I'm hoping for February, March, just the, honestly, just the construction part will probably take me three or four weeks at max. I don't foresee any large issues with that, I guess it may be sort of just the armpits.
Weather.
Weather. Mr. Chairman, I don't know that March is totally realistic. I'm gonna be candid with you.
Majority of the work is gonna be inside.
No, I understand that, but realistically, you have to be, engineering, the engineering plans have to be submitted to your engineer, the plans have to be perfected, final architectural plans have to be filed. I, I think realistically, breaking ground by, say, February, just breaking ground in February is probably.
Right, so what I meant, if you had everything done by January, February, it'll, it'll take it three to four weeks to actually do the project.
So, you're looking to have the fence up, let's say, six months?
Correct. I think that's fair. But again, if the board so chooses, we'll shut, we'll shut the business down until construction.
I mean, I don't think anybody on the board wants to hurt his business by shutting it down. I just think that the concern is the vehicles.
And it's a legitimate concern, but we're here to tell you that we agree with you, and we'll do whatever's necessary, and if, if it's drastic to the point where you want to know that that problem is being rectified, we'll shut the business down. But fencing is certainly another option.
I mean, I, I, I would think, at least on the one side, a quick, easy solution is buy a chain and put it across and have plastic, tube it across and that's yellow or reflective tape on, so people see it so that they don't trip over or walk into it or this or that, you know, that could be a quick, easy solution. And I don't think you would need many permits or anything for that.
You know, I bet.
I would just caution the board, that the board's probably not in a position where it can make recommendations of how they should proceed with the application. If I could just go over the history very quickly, so the board has some sense of what they can and can't do today. The application was fully heard by the members that are sitting here today, back in, in September. The application was for preliminary and final site plan approval with variants, including a use variance, if the board members will recall, a gas station is not permitted, a convenience store is permitted. There is an existing gas station, they want to put in a convenience store, which is currently not there, which interestingly enough, they can put in a convenience store. The board heard the testimony and also of the professionals, the applicant, the applicant's professionals, and also of members of the public. And one of the concerns that the board had voiced was, as was said again today, whether the applicant is able to control the property, or concerns about security, parking, garbage, deliveries, just to name a few, I can go through, the others, I guess, give me some time, but those are the major ones. So, the applicant chose to ask this board to reconsider the conditions of its approval base. Now, the board on its own could have said, look, we believe, after hearing that there were violations for the parking the next day, could have said that we want this applicant to come back before us, because we believe that the applicant misled us. Counsel chose to bring it before the board, on behalf of the applicant, on, prior to the board acting, to say, look, we believe you misled us. So, that's, certainly militates towards the favor of the applicant to try to resolve this matter. But the board should consider, and I need to have something at least on the record, among the conditions were the numerous concerns that the board members and the members of the general public had about whether this applicant can actually, for lack of a better word, put, maintain and police the site.
And, Mr. Chairman, I don't disagree with anything your attorney said. I think, in discussing this with the applicant, it might be cleaner to avoid any future concerns by the board, the public, et cetera, just to just simply shut the operation down, put a construction fence up, and we would apply for a permit to put that construction fence up. And that way, no one can get onto the site, no cars or anything. I think, I think practically speaking, we could debate, you know, the intention for the applicant, the sincerity, but it, it, literally, it's, and I, I sort of empathize with the ability to police this full-time, and also to take up the police activity full-time. So, maybe it is why, and we're willing, we're willing to live by that condition, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. We will shut the operation down, and we'd, we'd have to then perfect our approval, file the, file the revised site plan, engineering plans with your engineer, continue to work on the architectural plans, file our building permit, and then we, we're, we're clear to go for a building permit and commence construction, then the site would be reopened for construction activities. That just might be the simplest way, the path of least resistance, and the applicant's willing to do that.
I'll be more than willing to do that. I think it would resolve concerns about navigating through fences and making your zigzags into the pumps. So, just going from the property on the entrance, all the way to where it can go up to the side, I'll be open to barricading that all for the construction fence or some sort of material.
But that would, but that would have to go all around.
It would, so as if, here's property situated, go from here up until four corners. So, that way, there would be no entrance into the property, since it's not the, since it's not the operation.
And the applicant would represent that they would file an application for a fence permit, you know, as soon as practical, and submit plans for that. And, but, and then once the permit, you know, and it's up to the board, but we can either shut it down now and keep the tape and everything the way it is, or we could continue having it open, and then once we get the friends permit, it's shut down. I mean, we're open to discussion on that.
I, I just have a question. So, if you put a construction fence up, because there's gas pumps there, is there anything special that has to be done to secure those pumps?
Yeah, so the only thing you have to do is, uh, no, so the only thing you have to do is you have to press the emergency stop light. So, essentially, what happens is, every time you close, I can press the emergency stop light, so there's no dispensing that could be done. And once you press the emergency stop light, it, lack of right, it kills all the electronic switches, so in case anyone tries to go in, it can't do any harm or it cause any damages. One thing I can say is, even until the permits are approved, I can have daily monitoring of the site, I can inform my employee who visits the site daily, even though there's no business going on, just to show it's.
I was gonna ask a question, can the pumps be dismantled prior to?
So, the pumps can definitely be boarded up, that's not an issue. So, if you've seen gas stations who close up, they make a box around those pumps, so that way, no one can, for lack of a better word, pumps. So, as part of the condition, I can box out the pumps, therefore, so here is your gas pump, there's a wooden structure which goes around the thing, which just secures the pumps and etc.
I don't know whether that require, that would require a construction permit, or, I mean, I'm not sure whether, we could, we could investigate whether.
I can torque it, whatever.
Point is.
If then one was closed it down, would that then, how long can it be closed for before it's quote-quote abandoning the use of that?
No.
Because they have an approval. I, potentially, of us. No, I thought that was a question, but since we've, we've granted an extension to your memorialized approval, so however we resolve, if we resolve these conditions, that can all be memorialized in the resolution. Once the resolution's adopted, we're protected, we have that protection.
I, the only reason I mention pumps is for safety issues.
I agree with you.
So, we would be turning off the dispensers, any gas in the ground would be either sold, parked in thing, or we can just keep, right, so same thing, just now that you, just because you know they should be ready, well, the same thing, which comes and has two motors, one's a suction motor and one's a dispensing motor. So, what they can do is, prior to closing it down, allow the tanker to come in and just suck out all of their fuels underground, and for the three, four, five months it'll take for the construction, so there is no hazard to the site in any way she perform.
Okay.
Anyone have any other questions? We'll be opening up the public desk.
I was gonna say, I understand that you guys are trying to bend it backwards to make this work, and I, I appreciate your concern, but how, how long ago did you tell the contractors that were working that they couldn't park on that property?
So, the night of the hearing, I went back the very next day, and I made calls to the construction company who was parking there, and I said, gentlemen, we can't allow you guys to park, and said, you know, we purchase fuel from you, and yada, yada, yada. And I said, listen, I simply can't allow you guys to do that anymore, and we, that's part of our construction to build the site.
So, a couple days later? You told them they couldn't park there?
Exactly.
Because I would buy that site, I'd go by it, I lived down the street, or Danny does. There's contractors, been parked there up until today, when I rode by, and guys with hard hats, were going in their cars and leaving and coming back. There was two sets of this, and today there was cars on the one side, as you saw today.
So.
Late, election day, it was cars parked on both sides.
Yes, so all certified that. So, the gentleman who I made an agreement with, he, he had an agreement with, I guess, his office staff, that they could park as long as they're purchasing fuel, other individuals who are parking there, which are not, which are still part of the organization, but are subcontractors of that company, so I guess they seen the practice of the company parking there, so they feel like that they can park there.
So, you still let them park there?
I can, I.
You still let the contractors park there?
No, so we told them, no, so we do not, so we don't, don't pursue from us anymore. Every single, we told them, they're not allowed to, these subcontractors are not authorized to park there by any way she perform. Actually, one was towed today. They actually came out, Musa and Sons came out around five o'clock, he called, actually six o'clock, five, somewhere around five and six o'clock, he called me and said, do I have your authorization to tow? I said, you do. So, they actually towed, because we're not allowing anyone to park there. So, those people that you see parking there are just construction officials, but not anyone that I allowed to park there. I guess they see empty spaces, so they go, okay, fine, now we're allowed to park there.
And that's what I have the issue with, because if you own a business, and that's private property, anybody, you can call, your man who works there pumping gas can call a tow truck as soon as he sees a car parked there, and a guy walks away, and he's giving them foul language, because he's saying he's gonna have his car towed, well, then, that guy can call the tow company right there?
So, yes, but any tow company, which I've learned, is not allowed to tow from your premises unless their sign is on the building, which says, if your car is towed, you may retrieve it at this and this hour.
Okay, so you just put that sign up this week?
That sign went up this week.
I didn't learn that.
So, the very next day, when I started calling tow company, then I said, guys, people are parked there, can you start towing them? And they said, no, there's a, I guess there's some sort of law that if you be towed from a parking spot, it has to list three things, what the amount will be if they get towed, and where the car is gonna be located, so that way, you're not gonna be car stolen. So, on that sign, it would say, please contact this number, we charge thirty-five dollars for your tow, S and Y.
I understand all that, I, I know the rules of parking on public property.
So, that, that was our concern, that we couldn't just call any Joe Schmo parking item towed, until those signs went up, and.
I just don't know why it took you so long to have a tow company.
I, I, I think the reason is, I don't.
There's two reasons. One.
One, I don't think you had a total appreciation for what was involved, is that correct?
That is partly correct.
What's the other reason?
Second reason is, prior to us purchasing the gas station, there was a contract from the previous contractor, which made, I think, a certain period of contract, so they said, you can't contract and have another company park there, because we own the, we have the contract to that premises. And I told them, I'm not the same owner, and you're not doing your job, right? If that's the case, come and tow. They're from a company which, the shell brand contractor, which some guy, I didn't even know where they were from, and I had a great trouble even getting ahold of my family, got someone to hold in their office, and they stated that we cannot, you cannot move our signs until there's a mutual agreement. We spoke to them, we said, you know, either you have to start patrol, get right away, or we're gonna have to terminate the agreement that you had. They came to consensus that that was fine, so therefore, their signs are moved, and most of the signs were removed by location.
And I think you're right.
So, that was just the process of going.
You're right. Needs to have, understand how to manage his business, and I've advised him that the last thing he needs to continue to do is to continually to try and police this on his own, whether it's to tow, towing the vehicles, contacting the police, going out himself and arranging for the towing. So, I think that, subject to the board's approval, that's why I think we're, we're here basically telling you, it's over, we're gonna shut the business down, put up a construction fence, and move forward the project, and approve the property, and that's what we're hoping the board will agree to.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think you need to.
All right. Anyone here from the public that would like to come forward, have any comments or questions on this? Saying that we will close the public portion?
Mr. Chairman, procedurally, what the board needs to do at this point is, if it believes that it wants to consider this application again, whether with the new condition, there's new conditions that have been offered, which is that the business would shut down, and that the property would be encircled by a fence that's not of the removable type, easily removable type. It would have to rescind the action that previously taken to approve the application. And normally, a board, once an ac, an application has been approved, can't rescind it, except in this specific circumstance, which the municipal land use law does take provisions for, where there is a reconsideration, whether brought by the applicant or on the board's initiative to bring it back before the board. So, we would need a vote to rescind the prior approval, and then the board would then go into adopting a resolution for either approval with this new condition, or new conditions, and the prior conditions that have previously been run into the record, or whether to deny the application at that point. Now, the board is aware that it has only five members, and the applicant's also aware that it has five members, the applicant's entitled to full complement of seven members, the applicant's attorney can certainly make a decision not to go to a vote today after the rescinding of the prior approvals occur.
Okay, worth discussion.
I mean, I'm, I'm satisfied with what happened here today and I think that we should rescind and then, I, I mean, I'm willing to vote on the new.
I'm closing it and having it outside.
The addition of the new condition.
With, with the prior conditions in existence, yes. Um, more than willing to do that.
Okay, so.
Well, my question is, I'm sorry.
So the, the first motion would have to be a motion to rescind the prior approval. And then you'd have to have a roll call vote on that after second. And then the subsequent step is to motion to approve with all prior conditions and the inclusion of the new condition, uh, that the business, the voluntary con, uh, condition in this case, that, uh, the business would be shut down. Um, and the second condition being that he would, uh, the applicant would be close the property with the fence.
I guess, I guess, I guess one question would be, what date would you want us to say that you will close it? That was, you know, you, you're gonna have to get some permits.
Uh, we will shut the, well, two things. One, we will shut the, uh, the application. Maybe that was great, but he said he's gonna shut the business.
So as long as I can get the approvals to fancy property, um, I can close it down just coming Monday.
I just don't know, given the Thanksgiving holiday, it's unrealistic.
So why can't you still shut it down Monday?
I was, I want to throw out a practicality. Like to throw a practicality here. If you shut down the business before you get the approvals in line or before you can have the fence ready to go, there would be a period of time where the site is completely unpoliced.
No, so my, sorry, I already said that. My employee will never not be at the site until it's fully fenced off. No, that's not a concern.
But unfortunately, those people are giving your employee a hard time. So it's not going to alleviate, I guess, the initial concern of the vehicles being on your property.
So, Mr. Chairman, what I would suggest is, one, the applicant would file a, a construction permit, a, a fence permit. Upon approval of that, we could immediately shut the business down once the fence is up. Or we can shut it down, you know, next week and then immediately file the fence permit and then, you know, we shut down. We, we're willing to work with how your staff and your board might feel is appropriate, but I think you get the gist. Mr. Chairman, the only thing I was gonna ask before you take a vote on this is, you know, I, as your attorney indicated, you're not, there were seven members here last time, Mr. Chairman, I know you're aware how you voted last time. I would sort of like to ask if there's any concerns or comments that you may have with regard to what the applicant's proposing before there's a motion to vote on the rescission. That's.
Mr. Chairman, you certainly can't tell them how you're doing.
No, correct, but I think you understand my question.
Like I said before, I did not want you to shut the business down or this or that. But, you know, that's a condition that you're willing to put in, um, you know, I don't have any negative or positive about that. You know, it's your decision, you know, and it was nothing that we said that made you do that. That was just on the devolved it, so, you know.
Fair enough.
I mean, I know you have to have five votes positive or yes, it's such a, to get this passed. So I mean, I guess it's on you guys who wanna go forward or, um, not.
The board still is going to go forward on the rescission of the prior approval. The question really remains whether the applicant wishes to go forward with a vote on the application with the prior conditions plus the new condition that he's agreed to tonight, or whether he wishes to postpone that until the full board is present.
Uh, under the circumstances, since the board is going to be taking action on the rescission in any event, uh, my client, the applicant's willing to let this process go forward. If the chairman's okay, um, allow the board to introduce a motion and vote on the rescission and then we would request that the board consider a modification of the approval uh, with the conditions that we've discussed. So we're okay with the board proceeding.
Okay. Uh, do I have a motion to rescind the last?
Yes, I'll make a motion to rescind.
Second?
Helen Escona?
Yes.
John Zimmerman?
Yes.
Michael Bellman?
Yes.
Nancy Coppola?
Yes.
John Cox?
Yes.
Now, we're gonna go ahead with the.
Now, we're gonna go ahead with the vote for all the amended.
This is a motion to approve with all prior conditions and the inclusion of the new condition, voluntary condition that the business would close.
By Monday?
By Monday, with, with the applicant agreeing to file a application for a construction, temporary construction fence to be located around the perimeter of the property as practically can be done, you know, with the city, but, yes.
Do I have a motion?
Uh, I'll make that motion. Do I have to say it all?
No.
Helen Escona?
Yes.
John Zimmerman?
No.
Michael Bellman?
Yes.
Nancy Coppola?
Yes.
John Cox?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, that's four votes, yes, one vote no. The application is to be denied.
So, Mr. Chairman, I guess what we would ask is perhaps to come back for reconsideration of that when you have a full complement and we could renotice if necessary, but I guess we would have to.
Yeah. Okay, so I guess we'll do the legwork. Do you do the legwork and speak with them? Put it up or possibly hand it up? I don't know if we have much on there or not.
No, I, we don't think we have anything yet, right? No.
When does that mean? The twenty-third of December?
I don't recall to care about.
That would be before.
That's.
It's moved up to this December sixteenth.
I was, I, I moved it up. It's December sixteen.
So, so you know, you can mark me out, so I can, I'll be in Georgia. No, I'll be in Georgia. Don't mark this up.
I'll be here on the sixteenth. I'll be back here.
Um, December, oh, so, Mr. Chairman, you will not be here?
I will not be here on that. It's probably the first one.
No, no, I'm, so, should we carry to the next meeting then?
Well, we're, we're not gonna be carrying, I think, what you're.
I mean, it's, yes.
Uh, I, it might be best if you speak with.
Dan.
Yeah, but, but let's see what we can wrangle up, uh, if it's tight, you know, we can always, you know, if we have like an exact seven, you can always notice and then we can carry them if need be. So we can cross that version, but, uh, pencil you in for December at this point.
Uh, my question is, I guess, um, would we need, uh, you know, to, in light of the situation, um, that would be reconsider, we'd still be noticing for reconsideration of the condition, but, but now it's been rescinded, so.
Well, it's actually, there's a separate provision in municipal land use law for reconsideration of a no vote.
Right.
So you'd be proceeding under that separate.
Correct.
Very similar, and I'll board the board members again.
What's that?
I'll board the board members again.
Right.
Board the board members again with my legal recitation, I guess.
Because obviously we would want, so we would be going to that provision of the municipal land use law to consider reconsideration of a no vote and therefore we would not be presenting a full, the full application again, but simply requesting that all the other conditions, including what we discussed tonight, the incorporated, the council just wanted to make that point. Thank you very much.
Don't feel like saying, uh, afterwards, and, um, I never will be coming.
You can't open it up.
No.
Which we have been real, you know.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.